Good evening. This time we'd like to call and order the meeting of the Belbrook City Council, October 28th, 2019. If we would please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation of equality and justice for all.
Thank you. Pam, could you please call the roll?
Mr. Edwards.
Here.
Mr. Greenwood.
Here.
Mrs. Seager-Lawson.
Here.
Dr. Van Veldheisen.
Here.
Mr. McGill.
Here.
Mayor Schwalter.
Here. Elaine's not with us yet, she was stuck in traffic, but let's have a motion to excuse her this evening, and if she shows up, she may be a late show. You have a motion, please?
So moved.
Thank you. Second?
Second.
A motion was made by Mr. McGill to excuse Mrs. Mittelstetter from tonight's meeting. This was seconded by Mr. Edwards. Mr. McGill.
Yes.
Mr. Edwards.
Yes.
Mr. Greenwood.
Yes.
Mrs. Seager-Lawson.
Yes.
Dr. Van Veldheisen.
Yes.
And Mayor Schwalter.
Yes. Thank you. Next item is the approval of the work session in the regular meeting minutes of October the 14th, 2019. Does any member of council have any corrections or additions to those minutes?
None, Mayor.
None, Mayor.
Scene done, the minutes are approved as written. Today are mayor's announcements, we have one of the most interesting events we do each year, which is the beautification awards. And this year, I'd like to have the chairs, Robert and Michelle Johnson, come forward to present the awards.
It'll just be me.
Okay.
My wife is here, but she won't be joining me up here, so, next slide, please. So this year is a bit of a change for the Belbrook Beautification Award. My wife and I have been on the committee for several years, but Bronn Wilson, who was the previous chairperson, decided to step down last year, so my wife and I took it over. So in addition to that change, we also have a few new committee members, so if you're here, if you would stand up, I know Becky Wick is not here, she's one of our neighbors. Sophia Riley is also a new member, and I don't see her in the audience either. But I know Bonnie Howe is here, if you would stand up. And then we have Betty Ogerd. And then we have my wife, who likely won't stand up.
Well, thank you for taking it on, it's a new change.
Yep. Yeah, we've been involved since 2007 or so, 2008, I think it was. So, how do we make the awards? We have five sections within the city, and we, each section is assigned to a committee person, and they drive around that area and make nominations. So those select four, they'll select four nominations for that given area, and those will all come back to us as the chairpeople, and we'll assemble those together, and then provide them out to the rest of the committee members, and then we all drive around Belbrook looking at homes. There's been a few times over the years that we've definitely gotten some looks as we're driving slowly by, "Why are they looking at my house?" For future reference, next year, you don't have to be a committee member in order to make a nomination. You, as a citizen of Belbrook, would like to make a nomination, feel free to reach out to my wife or I, and we will add those onto the list of possible nominees. If somebody, if a citizen does nominate a home, they can, those on committee can either accept that or nominate four of their own. So sometimes a given section may have five or more nominations. And city council members and those on the committee and winners in the past five years are not eligible. Next slide. We'll go to our first home, we'll go by our sections, the first winners are Michael and Joanie Dingledine, I know I saw them, there they are. I should have mentioned before, I'll call them up in a moment to accept it, but all of our award winners receive these engraved rocks. We had to find a new entity this year to engrave these rocks, the prior company that did those no longer does it, and so this year, we were able to enlist the high school STEM class. Their teacher, Blake Barnes, engraved these for us. They have a laser engraver at the school, and so they came out very nicely. So, our first winner, Michael and Joanie Dingledine, if you'd come up and give you your rock and your certificate. If you'd like to say anything. Congratulations. Thank you. Next we have 2223 South Lakeman Drive, William and Robin Wobbs. Are they here today? Should recognize the hat. Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Moving on to Section B, we have 4035 Eckworth Drive, Alex and Diane Faber. Right here. All right. Our next house, and no surprise here, we have 4098 Maxwell Drive. After 30 or so years of being on the committee and therefore ineligible to win, first year they're eligible to win, they do win, Dale and Bronn Wilson. And there was no undue influence from the committee. Properly nominated.
Thank you. You so much for doing this.
Well deserved.
Section C, 4216 Barrel Drive, James and Patricia Durey. Okay. Moving on to Section C, we have, I know they're here, 1665 Cedar Court, Dale and Susan Steele. Susan was quite excited. Moving on to Section D, on 3588 Big Tree Road, we have Matt McHannon Couch and Doug and Annie Smith.
Robert, they are not here tonight, they're my next door neighbors, and they moved in that house in June of 18, so it's been pretty tremendous what they've done in a very short order.
Also in Section D, 143 Upper Hillside Drive, Roger and Sharon Donner, they are also prior. And next we have Section E, 1828 Von Havel Court, Vernon and Kristen Oakley. Okay. And our last homeowner, we have 1905 Little Sugar Creek, Thomas and Vicki Craycraft. Okay. And we don't have a slide for this one, but our, we also nominate one business every year, and this year's winner was Bella Realty. They did a really nice job of renovating their office right here on the corner, so.
Very good. Thank you very much, Robert, let's have a big round of applause for all of our winners. Very well done. Any comments from council at all?
I'm just happy the Wilsons can finally win. I mean, I definitely dedicated a lot of time and effort to this city, so we appreciate it.
I'm just excited to win and keep performing as a general employee. And I'm so thankful to Michelle and Bronn.
A little embarrassing, but does somebody have the wrong certificate?
No.
Looks like we're missing one.
Who are we missing? I'll check it, sir.
Okay.
Next on the agenda is the oath of office, Tim Tuttle, Planning Board. Timothy, join me at the lectern.
May I just repeat after me? I, Timothy Tuttle.
Hi, Timothy Tuttle.
solemnly swear that I will support.
Solemnly swear that I will support.
the Constitution of the United States.
Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Ohio.
And the Constitution of the State of Ohio.
And will obey the laws thereof.
Will obey the laws thereof.
And that I will.
And that I will.
In all respects.
In all respects.
uphold and enforce.
Uphold and enforce.
the provisions of the charters.
The provisions and the charters.
And the ordinances of Belbrook.
And the ordinances of Belbrook.
And will faithfully discharge the duties.
And faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the office upon which I am appointed.
Of the office on which I am appointed.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
We serve on the planning board, Timothy, you need to sign here, and then we'll make it official.
Thank you.
10/28/19. Once again, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is a public hearing of ordinance number 2019-19. Councilman Edwards, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Ordinance number 2019-19, and ordinance repealing ordinance number 2019-14, and adopting new ordinance number 2019-19, to adjust the City of Belbrook appropriations for 2019. Whereas the City of Belbrook adopted ordinance 2019-14 to adjust the City of Belbrook appropriations for 2019, and whereas there were clerical errors in the beginning and amended appropriation lines, and whereas the City of Belbrook wishes to repeal ordinance number 2019-14 and adopt ordinance number 2019-19 and correct clerical errors. Now therefore, the City of Belbrook hereby ordains, Section 1, council hereby repeals ordinance 2019-14 to correct clerical errors, and hereby adopts new ordinance number 2019-19. Section 2, at the 2019 appropriation levels, and several of the funds listed below be amended as follows, and in the body of this ordinance are the various funds, the total 2019 appropriations, the revisions and the amended appropriations, I won't go through it line by line, but 2019 appropriations, the grand total is $6,563,677. Total revisions told $171,637, and then amended 2019 appropriations are $6,735,314. Section 3, this ordinance shall take effect and be enforced from and after the earliest period provided by law. And I think the, we've, we read this in last month, last month, at the last meeting, and the biggest changes are in the total general fund, $76,705, and then special revenue funds of $68,480, and then a smaller amount of $26,452, and enterprise funds are waste and water. Did you have anything to add?
No, so this, this is the exact same amounts that were on the original ordinance that came before council, but the beginning and ending amounts, there was a clerical error, so we had to bring it back to council, so this is, no other changes other than those amounts.
Are you sure, because I'd love to read it again next morning.
Let's hope.
Given this is a public hearing, is anyone else on council of any comments? Harry, Ned, and Zoom for the audience have comments with regards to ordinance number 2019-19. Scene done, I declare the public hearing closed. We have a motion for the adoption of ordinance 2019-19.
I'll make a motion to adopt ordinance number 2019-19.
Thank you, and a second?
One second.
Thank you.
A motion was made by Mr. Edwards to adopt ordinance number 2019-19, and ordinance repealing ordinance 2019-14, and adopting new ordinance 2019-19, to adjust the City of Belbrook appropriations for 2019, so seconded by Mrs. Seager-Lawson. Mr. Edwards.
Yes.
Mrs. Seager-Lawson.
Yes.
Mr. Greenwood.
Yes.
Mrs. Mittelstetter.
Yes.
Dr. Van Veldheisen.
Yes.
Mr. McGill.
Yes.
Mayor Schwalter.
Yes. After having had four public hearings last meeting, October the 14th, tonight only one, we have very little legislation this evening, which is nice. We have no ordinance, no introductions of ordinances, nor do we have any resolutions, but we do have a city manager report.
Franklin Street Bridge Project, Service Director and I met with staff from LJ Beeter to review the first stage of design for the project. It's going to, it's going to look great. It was the first time that we were able to see more refined design, they had it on a huge screen for us to see, so we are well on track with that project. I think that first stage design wasn't supposed to happen until mid-2020, and we're just trying to get things moving so that if funding does become available through MBRPC from maybe projects getting pushed back or coming in under budget, that our project, which is smaller, in the grand scheme of things, might get funded sooner, so. Final design will be next year, and was folded into the budget that we reviewed earlier. The Small Business Revolution television show that I had talked about before, everybody that had nominated Belbrook should have got an email outlining the next steps. On November the 18th, they will narrow it down to the top 10 towns, and then they'll actually be visiting towns to be able to pick one for their show, so. I know that we had a lot of nominations for Belbrook, which is really great, so it'd be really exciting if that happened. So the farmer's market has officially come to an end, we did not get to do the one last, this past weekend, it was horrible weather for it, and with, you know, things being at the end of season, there wasn't really a lot of product with the vendors, so we're excited to have the first year under our belt and bring it back next year, and I've had a community member and a vendor of the market actually volunteer to help run that, so that'll be good. The Brook Mills and Be Well Belbrook event in 2020, staff met with the race director of the actual race, and we selected a date for next year, we verified this with the Lions Club, so that we know that there's no conflict here, which it's going to sound like there is, but there's not, I assure you. So August 22nd will be the date of the Brook Mills 10K and the BOL Belbrook event, so we're really excited to bring that back and hopefully make it even bigger and better than it was this year. And the Lions Club Festival will be the following weekend, just so that everybody knows. And I know that there was talk about a Belbrook Open for Business event, which we were hoping to do an open house style event for any empty spaces downtown. We're going to table that until the spring, we weren't able to get as much response as we'd hoped, so we're going to kind of take a more personal approach with some of the property owners and hopefully get them on board for the spring, so. We still want to do it, but it's just not going to work out in November, so I think that the first date was supposed to be this Saturday, so I sent out a letter to all the property owners, letting them know, so we'll kind of regroup and try to give us some more lead time into that and do it in April, so, that's it for me.
Any questions in the city manager's report?
You went to Newark, you see the basket?
I've seen it before, but I didn't go, I didn't visit it this time.
Did they do anything with that? Last time I seen it was empty.
I don't know if they've done anything with it. I mean, it's a unique building.
It's a neat building, yeah. That's all I have.
Any other comments of council? Good report, Melissa. Let's move on to committee reports. Service?
Nothing tonight.
Thank you. Safety?
Just a quick note, I get the, it's called on the job criminal justice update from Dave Yost, our Attorney General, top cop, and I just read a paragraph. "One of the questions that inevitably arises after a school shooting is, when a shooter clearly showed signs of trouble, why wasn't the attack prevented?" Says prevention is a missing piece after every attack, Attorney General Dave Yost said, "and the safety of children across our state depends on us plugging the gap." To that end, Yost and his team of school safety experts have devised an initiative centered on the prevention of targeted violence. It will send funding to both law enforcement officers and schools. Since a teen gunman killed three students at Chardon High School in 2012, Ohio has started a tip line and worked with schools to create emergency plans. The Attorney General said, "Those are like bookends on a shelf, and what we still need are the books, which give meaning to the space in between. That's why we're asking for law enforcement officers and school officials to team up to help prevent violence." So, I think this is positive, and I hope he continues on with this process, so our most precious don't have to endure some of these things. I was really pleased to hear that they're working hard on this, and that's all I have.
Thank you. What do you have to say about it?
Thank you, Mayor. Tonight was our first of three work sessions to discuss the 2020 budget. Tonight we discuss administration and other in service. We have one for police, and we have one for fire at our next consecutive two meetings. Be assured that council is looking at each of the budget item lines and doing our very best to make sure that our tax dollars, or your tax dollars, are spent as best as possible. It's a good process, we do this every year, we have some good discussion on some of the items, and, you know, we'll have a budget here by the end of the year to pass and present to the community. That's all I have.
Very good, thanks, Nick. Community affairs?
The only thing is to remind folks that Thursday is beggars' night, rain or shine, it's coordinated with all of the surrounding communities, so that everybody's on the same night, so.
Thank you, Elaine.
That's it for...
Thank you. All business, the matter of the Green County Master Trail Plan Support Request. This was essentially $1,200 and some change?
Yes, so this, all of the area municipalities, in the county, so villages, township, cities, everybody came together to get around some maps and talk about various connections that we would like to see as a wish list in our various communities, and so, Green County Parks and Trails and Green County Regional Planning wanted to do a Trails Master Plan, so this is actually going to piggyback off of their land use plan for the county, so I know that the question was raised at the last meeting, what the county was contributing. By folding this plan in with their land use plan, they're going to get a better rate on this, so that's, that's part of their contribution, whereas also, Green County Parks and Trails and Regional Planning are county departments, which are funded directly through the county, so that was the answer that I received to the question about the county's funding. And they're asking each municipality, each community township, $1,250 to go towards the total of $49,810 for the Master Trails Planning Project, so. I'd spoken with Sugar Creek Township, and it had not gone before the trustees, but their administrator felt that that's definitely something that they would support, because the trails are important to them as well, and I know that we would all like to see a nice connection to Spring Valley, we know that that's a very, very touchy subject and a very tricky connection to be made, but connecting us to the greater trail network is really important, whether that's the connection that makes the most sense or not, I don't know, but this plan is a step in that direction, just to say where we would like to be connected, and it's, it's a plan that would be adopted with the intention of being able to go out and point to the plan, to be able to try to get some funding in the future, so the ask is for $1,250, and if council is supportive of that, then we could fold that into the 2020 budget.
Any discussion amongst council?
I just think in support of our safe routes to school that the township has in place, and the intense use of our roads for bicycling and walking, I think it's worth the investment, because it's hugely popular in our entire community.
And this is also one of the goals in the comprehensive plan as well, so it's nice to at least get some direction, I think for 1250, I would think that's something we'd want to do.
Yeah. It falls right into the comprehensive plan.
Absolutely.
I think it's a good thing to get with, because of the management and planning is very important, and that should sum up to make it more safe, I think it's worth it.
Do we have a motion for it, Pam?
Yes.
Do we have a motion to support the Green County Master Trail Plan request?
I will move so.
Can we have a second?
Second.
Can we call the roll?
A motion was made by Mrs. Mittelstetter to commit, commit the $1,250 payment as our contribution to the countywide Trails Master Plan, this was seconded by Mr. McGill. Mrs. Mittelstetter?
Yes.
Mr. McGill?
Yes.
Mr. Edwards?
Yes.
Mr. Greenwood?
Yes.
Mrs. Seager-Lawson?
Yes.
Dr. Van Veldheisen?
Yes.
Mayor Schwalter?
Yes. This moves us to new business, and tonight's new business is the request to remove the walking path from the approved plans for Section 3, Phase 1 of Highview Terrace. Do we have anybody in the audience who's going to start it, or you want to start the discussion, or?
I can start the discussion. Okay, so, let me make sure I get to the right page here, so, there are a number of documents in the council packet, I tried to create a staff report that just kind of summarizes all of this, I know that the property owners are here that are making the request, so they'll be able to speak, speak about their concerns, so, just so that everybody kind of knows what's in front of us, as part of the development that has been recorded, when, when a development comes such as this, it goes to Planning Board for approval, and then it comes to council for approval, and so, in this particular plan, there is a walking path that is part of an easement, so there's a utility easement that's approximately 50 feet wide, and it basically runs from Dot's parking lot down near the old driveway, which I think that the old driveway entrance is still semi-visible, and it goes up basically, hugs the property slash tree line along Lot 50, and then it cuts up in between Lot 50 and Lot 51, and ties into the cul-de-sac, which is Sugar Mope Place. So, the property owners of Lots 49 and 50 are concerned, for a variety of reasons, with the walking path that is in the plan, and so they are requesting removal of the path from the plan, just for clarification purposes, and this is all in the packet, there are actually two walking path easements that are in the Highview Terrace area. There is a map, which is Page 3 of the staff report, and the original easement path is marked in red, and the second easement path, which is the one that we're feeding about tonight with the request to be removed, is highlighted in yellow. So, the original easement was dated 1975, and it's a five-foot wide easement that, it's really hard to locate this, I can, you can see it on the plans, but to understand what's actually, what actually exists on the ground is kind of hard to tell, because it appears to run right alongside the creek and the tree line. So, that original easement, like I said, was 1975, and the second easement was filed with the development plans in 2017, and it's 50-foot wide, which is a utility easement and a walking path easement, but there, in our, in all of the, looking at all of these different maps and plans and things like that, there was never really a formal proposal for the path, meaning, it's a 50-foot easement, but there's nothing that says that they were going to put a 50-foot path in. It's really hard to tell what exactly the path was going to be, I think that it was just thought to go inside that easement somewhere, but we do know that the exact location, as far as we can tell, has not fully been specified inside that 50-foot width. So, we have a history that is provided in the packet, the final development plan was approved in May of 2016 with an ordinance with conditions regarding the walking path easement. It was supposed to be between Lots 51 and 74, and Lot 74 ended up becoming Lot 50, it got renumbered at some point, and council approved that. And in that legislation and development plan, there was a notation that said that pedestrian access would be owned and maintained by the homeowners association, which is printed on the plan. City council then granted final approval in February of 2017 with a resolution, which is also attached, so that's kind of council's action as it's related to that development. And then there's some other supplemental information in here describing the two paths that I just outlined. describing the two paths that I just outlined. Ownership and liability, which as far as we can tell on the plan, it says that the homeowners association is responsible. There have also been some floodplain concerns that were raised. Bill Sheeman is kind of our expert floodplain spokesperson, so to speak. And he did not foresee any immediate issues. Granted, he's just a local individual that has a wealth of knowledge. He wasn't a paid engineer or anything like that, for what it's worth. But he does have a lot of knowledge. And if there's ever a concern about floodplain, Bill would definitely be our first stop, I would think. So I just wanted to preface that with that statement. And then it's noted that the comprehensive plan that was just adopted encourages walkability and access to downtown, which was kind of the goal of the path, to connect some of those northern communities to the downtown area. So this first came to Planning Board because any change to a recorded record plan has to first be considered by Planning Board. Now granted, this is just a conceptual idea. There haven't been any revised drawings that were actually provided with any removal of the path or anything like that. So it's a bit of an unconventional request in that regard because normally the requests that come before Planning Board and then council are actual plans that you look at. So this is actual...
Would it also be the developer bringing those plans forward?
Yes. The developer is typically the one that brings those plans forward as well. So this is a bit unconventional just by way of... By way of the way that this is being presented. So Plating Board first had their request presented at their August 22 meeting. They ended up tabling it because they wanted to take a closer look at it. And then on September 19th, they met again. They actually went out and they walked it and then had a formal meeting. And they denied with a vote of 3 to 0 to make any changes to the record plan. So the homeowners would like for council to take a look and to weigh in on this since they were not satisfied with the Planning Board's decision. So there is a wealth of information provided by the property owners. I've provided, you know, some of the legislation that was passed and some other things. So... And council was also provided with this information on Monday of last week because it's a lot to look at and we didn't want to give it to you guys traditionally, like we do on Fridays, for you to just have the weekend to take a look at it. So it's a wealth of information. And I know that the property owners are here, so they'll be able to speak to their concerns and address council.
Any comments on council this time? I'd sooner this time invite the property owner to come forth if he'd like to, or his representative. Yet again, the request is to eliminate the walking path, correct?
Yes, sir.
James, slide.
How much time, Pam? I don't know on this because it's a case we're seeing reasonable. And please correct me if I was wrong with any of that because I was getting some of that from Jeff and presenting on the path.
A little bit.
Okay.
Just a few things real quick. One is that it had to come in front of council. The planning... We always knew at the Planning Board that the council's going to have the final say. It's not that we weren't... I mean, we weren't pleased with what the planning committee had to say, but it inevitably would have ended up here anyway. So it's not that we were, oh, you know, we're bringing it to you guys as sort of secondary. So no matter what, even if the Planning Board had ruled in our favor, it would still have to come in front of council. So that being said, one of the things I would like to, I guess, question is, you mentioned Bill. Is he a certified EPA? You said that he would be our go-to on any sort of flood issues or any sort of flooding that would happen. Is he a certified engineer? Is he?
I don't know what Mr. Sheeman's credentials are. He's just... He's always been a very vocal member of the community with floodplain issues and works really closely with Hope Taff. So he's a good reference point for us. If he had a concern, he could refer us to somebody that would...
And I don't think he's an engineer, to be honest.
Yeah. I mean, he's somebody that's really concerned about floodplain issues in the community. So we like to talk about it.
Did he come out and walk the property?
I'm not sure if he did or not. Is Jeff in the room? Did Mr. Sheeman go out to the property?
Not with me. He said he'd stop by and walk with us. I don't know if he did or not.
Okay. Because it's... I mean, if you're not walking... The reason I ask this is this is some new information. Okay? And, you know, we've walked it. Some of the councilors come out and walked it with us. We walked with the planning committee. They... The planning committee wouldn't step outside of the easement we were talking about. So they didn't actually look at the other path that the city already has since 1974, '75. So they would only walk the path that we were talking about that day. So as we were walking, I was trying to explain to them that there's another easement right here. There are other options. They weren't really open to the idea at all. It was only to discuss the path that we were, you know, that we're talking about tonight. And so part of the reason I bring this up is, you know, if we're going to ask... There's... This is serious, okay? This has lasting consequences for my wife and I, for the property owners, okay? And, you know, it seems to be that there's a group think with this sort of situation. And, you know, I sort of... I sort of... Any meeting I go into or anytime I'm involved in anything like this, you know, I sit back and think. And a quote comes to mind, "Be wary of the man who urges an action in which he himself incurred no risk." The only people in this room, okay, that incur risk are my wife and I. We're the ones that are carrying this risk for as long as we own the property, for as long as we're Belbrook residents. And we are serious about being Belbrook residents. My girls cheer. We play soccer. We play softball. We're in Girl Scouts. You know, we're in the library. The girls just got an award here the other night. So we plan to be in the community for a long time. And we want to be positive members of the community. That being said, we are the only two that are incurring any risk on this whatsoever. No one sent up here incurs any risk. The developer incurs no risk. The people walking the path, although they incur risk because it's the elevation and it's dangerous, at the end of the day, I'm the one that has to pick up the pieces. And I'm the one that has to carry the insurance and I'm the one that has to deal with it. I sort of got sidetracked with the whole flooding thing. And I apologize, but it sort of threw me for a loop. Because one of the things that stands out in anyone's walk the property, the path has been placed right across the drainage basin. And that drainage basin is what keeps all the water from running into Little Sugar Creek. So if you come out and walk the property, you can see there's gullies all the way down Little Sugar Creek, deep ravines that that water comes rushing down. Just at the last committee meeting, my wife and I were here and they're combining Lots 51 and 52. And although I believe you stated that there was a drainage easement that wasn't going to be removed, it is. They're building the house right in the middle of that lot. That's going to put all that water... Once they regrade this, okay, all that water's going to come to the front and it's going to run down the cul-de-sac and it's going to go over the hill, right where we're talking about putting a walkway, a walkpath. The service departments came out and looked at it. The Green Counties came out and looked at it. They dug it up three times this year in the drainage basin. They cleaned the drainage basin out. The reason I bring this up is the only thing that you can put in there is chips and dust. The city, Rick, the developer, they agree that chips and dust is all can go there. Pavement can't go there. It's an easement. It's a sewage easement. It's a water easement, okay? If you pave it, if you put steps on it and something happens, it's going to get tore up. And the city or the county, they've already told us they're not responsible for bending back. We've stated all the facts and we've sort of beat them to death. And I don't mean to get sidetracked on the EPA issues, but if we're just going with a non-expert to come out and walk the property and say, "He says it's okay," I have problems with that because it's not okay, all right? If you've walked the property, and Melissa, I don't think we've met out there. I know Jeff has walked it with us, but I don't think we've personally met out on the property. If you walk from the cul-de-sac over the hill in the sewage and water easement, okay, that's completely washed out. And if you try to go down it right now, it's a slip and slide all the way to the bottom. I walked it yesterday and I wore big rubber boots that go up to my knees and I ended up in my ankles in mud. That's the reason Green County has come out and dug that basin up three times this year. They had to put an extension on top of the sewage manhole cover, two feet, because there's two feet of mud down there since they originally did it, okay? And they put a stick in the ground. That way, when it covers with two more feet of mud, they know where it's at and they can dig it down again. So if we're using a non-expert on something that's going to have lasting consequences on myself, my family, my wife, because we're the ones that are incurring the risk, I take issue with that.
James, one comment will make. Not to interrupt you, but I will. But, you know, we just got... We just talked to him, kind of, I think it was a casual conversation. I don't think we asked him to make an opinion on anything. And I don't think his comments are going to be binding on us. I mean, we're going to... If we have engineering work to be done, we will make sure that we get engineers to do that work.
Yes, sir. And I understand. It's being stated in the meeting as a matter of fact. And so that's the reason I... So, you know, I would ask the council to forego his opinion unless you come out and, you know, please look at it yourself. So there's a couple of things that my wife and I were told when this started. It's going to be a heavy lift. It's probably not going to happen. You know, you're fighting an uphill battle. And the reason I bring that up is, you know, we're the ones that have skin in the game. And anytime you hear that, all right, so let's think about it. Anytime we've heard, "Oh, it's going to be an uphill battle. It's going to be a heavy lift. It's going to be a heavy fight." You know, the 19th Amendment, is anybody aware of it? It's women's right to vote. What if they hadn't listened? I'm sure they were told it's a heavy lift. I'm sure they were told, "This isn't going to happen." You know, heaven forbid women have the right to vote, you know? And look where we are now. Look at the council. Ruby Bridges, Brown versus Board of Education, desegregation of schools. Has anybody ever Googled those images? Have you seen the people that were against it? James Meredith, the Ole Miss riots, okay? He was a veteran. He's an Army veteran. Couldn't attend Ole Miss. Do you think that someone didn't tell him it's going to be a heavy lift? You shouldn't do this? Yeah, they did. They did. But he did it anyway. That's the reason I bring this up. I literally have gotten sick of hearing, "It's going to be a heavy lift. You guys can't get this done." We have stated the facts and I'm not going to rehash them. You guys know it's over sewer. It's over water. If it gets dug up, it's not getting replaced. If there's a crack, if there's a leak, it's literally a disaster out there. And yet, we're hell-bent to put a path on it. Hell-bent to put a path on it. No matter what, we're putting a path in there. Rick's going to put $3,000 with the chips and dust and walk away. And then you know who's going to be shoveling all that out of the drainage easement? This guy. Because once the plat is built, I'm responsible for it. I'm responsible for the drainage basin where it all ends up. And I'm responsible for the big hole in the ground that this path goes right across. Green County's dug it up three times this year. To rent an excavator is about $400, $500 a day, okay? I'll be down there with a shovel digging it out every time we have a rain like we did on Saturday. And the reason I bring that up, okay, is no one seems to be taking into account the personal side of this because we're so hell-bent on this path. On this path that only... It only helps the people on Little Sugar Creek. I haven't seen one person from the Vineyards or Sable Ridge in here. I haven't. Why? Because they walk down the path that we have to do. We have to fix Little Sugar Creek Road. The Vineyards and Sable Ridge walk down the guardrail on Little Sugar Creek Road. They do. They don't come up through Highview. They never come up through Highview. And even if you force this path that we have to maintain, they're still not going to come up through Highview. They're not. They're not going to walk up and around. They're going to make a right on Little Sugar Creek, go across the guardrail by McGee Park, and they're going to walk right down the... Right down the guardrail where we have to fix it anyway. So I'm just asking for a little common sense and not be so hell-bent on we have to have this path. We have to have this path. A little less group think, not saying you guys. You know, you've seen it. My wife and I in the planning commission, we were the only two here, okay? The whole room full of people, some of them don't even live in Belbrook. You know, some of them... Some of the letters that were included in the original package to the planning board had Beaver Creek addresses. They don't even have houses in Highview right now. So this whole thing's been a little frustrating to us because we've gotten up and we've said the facts, we've said the truth. And it just seems to be hell-bent to leather. We want the path. We want the path. We want the path no matter what. So I just ask that you set back. Please take a good, hard look at it. The facts are there. In your hearts, if you've looked at the facts and you know that it's in a floodplain, you know that it's going to wash out, you know it's going to end up in the creek, you already know the right decision, okay? Just because it's in the comprehensive plan doesn't mean it's gospel. It doesn't mean it's the Constitution. It doesn't mean it has to be done. We can change it. We can change it. So I'm going to end with this. What is truth? Does anybody know who said that? Pontius Pilate. What is truth? When Jesus was on trial, Pontius Pilate said, "What is truth?" Because the crowd was screaming, "Kill him. Kill him. Crucify him." And Pontius Pilate knew he was innocent. He knew he was innocent. He knew the facts. He knew Jesus hadn't done anything. He knew it. But he washed his hands and let him be crucified. So I end with what is truth?
Thank you, James. You know, this is something we have not had before. We're kind of walking on new territory. What I'd like to see done ideally is to have the citizens in Highview work with the developer and come forth with a new final plan revision that would accommodate everyone taking into account everyone's best interests. I guess the best way to resolve it because like we're getting put in a spot that we don't really have any skin in the game, as you said. We're going to get complaints from one side for not having the path and the other side for having the path. And I walked the path with James on Thursday. And I want city staff to go back in and look to see about the elevation and the grade. I am surprised that we ever approved a plan that is that steep. And then we got the drainage manhole covers down at the bottom, which once we get a heavy rain, those are going to probably lift and become open holes. And this could be our worst mess. And already, we're having the county go out there and have to dig these manhole covers out. And they literally put a two-by-four in so they can find out where it is right now so they don't have to look so hard to find the manhole covers. And if we put chips in that pathway every time it rains, those chips are going to run down, just as you described. They're going to clog the sewer pipe down into the drain pipe. And until someone goes out to shovel those things off, we're going to have the entire system all messed up. We're going to stand water down the property. The path won't be usable by anybody. But I think overall, the grade is way too steep for a walking path. And I don't know what had happened between the final plan that they presented to us and today, but I think it's incredibly steep. And to your point about, you know, you want the liability, it is a liability. We walked down there very carefully. Now, I'm not very fit, but you are. But we took our time walking down that path and it was very difficult to walk down there. And I would not think anybody would want to have their children walking down. I also don't think most adults would be happy walking down there. And I, you know, I can only imagine the rain on Saturday, what that did to it. But there were some big, deep ravines in this path. And I don't know, Melissa, who's the person to do it? If we have our engineer to go back and get in touch with the developer engineer. But I think the elevation has changed from what was initially approved. I don't think we would have approved... And again, I'm not an engineer, but I don't think we'd approve anything that steep, period. Counsel?
I have seen lots and lots of dirt being pushed around on that development in the last couple of years. And I totally agree that it's different than what we approved. Just, I mean, I don't read elevation plans very well at all. But I've watched that dirt being shoved around and houses being built on dirt that was just recently put in place. So it's... And it was washing down into Little Sugar Creek the entire time that development's being built because there's nothing growing on it. It's just dirt.
Right.
I think that taking away the path is probably not a good idea because people are going to walk there anyway. And so they may not be walking where we've put this path, but they're going to walk somewhere. So I feel like we need to put a path where it makes sense for the people in the area, the homeowners and the property owners. I also think that if you don't give them a designated path, they're going to walk where they want to walk. And then they might be walking through your side yard. They might be walking around your porch or something like that.
Well, that's what they're doing now.
Right. So I think that we need to work with the developer and the engineers to make something that makes sense.
I would agree. I think there needs to be a path. The grade, I was out there today and I've been out there before. I'm not sure that... We have other grades that are severe. Hillrise, try to walk up that. I mean, that's a pretty severe grade.
But it's paved.
That would be the million-dollar question. Is a soft surface appropriate for this sort of use? I'm not sure that it is. I'm not sure that there's anything in any of the approvals that talked about what it needed to be, whether it needed to be soft, whether it needed to be concrete, asphalt or whatever. But I agree with Mr. Schweller that we probably need to get the developer and the association, whoever, together to figure out a viable way to make this path work. Because I remember the approval of Highview when I was on planning board and that was when it was along the river. And there was issues with that because that, you know, the whole thing was in the flood. I don't... Wasn't involved in the recent adjustment to the plan. But there's got to be a way to make it work. If there isn't a way to make it work, then let's see the engineering that tells us that there's no way to make it work. I mean, we just need to get all the facts.[1791.72] We, you're right, to your point, we can't force something just because it's in a plan. But I don't have enough information right now to say, no, let's scrap this. I'd like to see someone say, or an engineer report saying, this grade is too steep, the drainage isn't appropriate, we cannot put hard surface on there, soft will just wash away, that'll make our decision easier, I think.
I agree, I agree.
I recall on planning when it was originally, cause I was on planning board when it was originally approved as well, and it was to be a long Little Sugar Creek. And it was not going to be paved, it was just going to be a soft path. And kind of kept open so people could walk there. They, people walking there keep it open now anyway. But, um, I didn't go back and look, but I did not recall any paths internal to the development itself. And people are not gonna walk up from Little Sugar Creek and walk up that big, steep hill and then walk down from inside. They're gonna go along Little Sugar Creek, like they're doing right now.
I'm gonna walk right in the heart of it, what, fifty, forty-nine, where it's a little bit more casual grade.
Mm-hmm.
But yeah.
I walked, uh, with Mr. Cypher's, uh, last Thursday afternoon, and I've been watching this plat as it's been in, been going in. It's, and like Elaine pointed out, a lot of dirt moved around, uh, in that particular area. I live in a floodplain, so I'm always interested in the floodplain and things that affect it. And, um, I was kind of questioning the, a retention pond in the floodplain, I don't understand that concept. Um, the drainage, all from the point where, from the sidewalk down, as if so stated, is steep, and all that runoff goes into a fairly small pipe that runs, I'm, I'm guessing thirty, forty yards into the retention pond. So all that debris, uh, stops it up, uh, several times, it's had to be cleaned out. Um, also, Mr. Cypher's took me on the original path next to Little Sugar Creek, and I think in some way, it'd be a missed opportunity not to incorporate that some way, because it's a beautiful valley. And, uh, I know, uh, McGee Park has, uh, next to the creek, they cleaned that out since I've lived here, and people go to the park, and the first thing you do is you go out to the creek, cause their body of water is always interesting. And so, the association and developer, I think if they would take a second look at this and, and look at all the different options available, and a nice piece of real estate in the creek that you have, I think it'd come out a lot better than what we've got thrown at us here. And like Mayor Schweller stated, that, you know, we hate to be thrown in to tell you or approve something that maybe, um, you know, we just don't like to tell people what to do, but it is our job to approve this, but I think a second look would definitely be, I mean, there's no big hurry, I don't think there's a big hurry in doing it. And, uh, so, with the, uh, sewer easements and all the easements, I think it may be, I'm guessing, it may be looked at, well, it's an easy place to put a path, there's already an easement there, so. And it, the other question I never really got a good answer on, and I never talked to an attorney or anything, but the liability factor, Mr. Cypher's brought up, as far as if somebody falls on the path, since it's on his lot, I don't know if, if he is liable. And, um, I don't know. There's, uh...
I believe the paperwork said that the HOA is, is liable, because it's owned by...
Didn't really say they are, it says they would maintain, but didn't really address the liability issue.
Okay.
There's a similar easement, walkway between Sugar Run and Regent Park, that's hard surface, it's concrete. You know, I'm sure the liability issue can be resolved, so I can't imagine the property owners on either side are gonna be liable. I mean, they could be, but...
Well, I'm just saying, it's an answer.
I, I guess the other question I have, we don't, the C doesn't have any enforcement mechanism to determine what type of surface goes on that path, correct?
I think the county said they couldn't put a hard surface on it, cause it is a utility easement.
Well, it was discussed in council, and it was part of, um, one of the discussions. I can't remember if the full...
I thought I saw that in...
...specifications, but at one of the council meetings, I think it was the first one, uh, the conversation was had about what it was going to be, and I think that they talked about gravel, and then they talked about asphalt, um, so it, it was part of the approvals, but now I can't remember exactly where it was. It might be in here. But it was part of the council discussion, one of them.
Specifically what it was to be?
I thought, I thought so. I thought it said, like, impermeable matter, blah, blah, blah. It said something like, not, I don't know what it said.
I mean, there's a big difference between soft and hard as far as costs go, and...
Yeah.
And, and, but again, if we don't have any enforcement ability to say what it has to be, then that's gonna be a negotiation between the residents, their association, and the developer to determine, you know, what that may or may shouldn't be. And then, look at a larger issue, if we get engineering studies that says, doesn't really matter what it is, you know, if it's concrete or asphalt, if it's still gonna wash away at some point, you know, doesn't make any sense to, to, to put that in. I mean, I, I guess that's, I, I don't know. I mean, I'd like it in, but not just so it could wash away after the first rain.
Yeah, soft surface is gonna wash away at that, at that slope.
Yeah.
I think I saw it in minutes, and I think it was, um, May of twenty sixteen where it was discussed. But I think it was in minutes. I know I've read it. There, I mean, there's a lot of information about Highview Terrace that's been out there, so, I mean, we've, we've looked at a lot of different things.
So I guess at the end of the day, if, if, um, additional studies are done, or we get additional opinions, we're gonna have to decide whether or not we're gonna enforce that trail easement, correct? Okay? And what we're, what I'm saying, and I can't speak for everyone else, is that we don't have enough information to make that determination tonight, that there's...
I see so.
And that we would like to get more information to see if it's possible. Once it's, if we find out that it's possible, then at that point, we can start talking about what the surface needs to be and how it needs to go. And I think it's important, walkability, home, homes within a walkable distance from downtown are very, you know, it's very important, and it's, you know, desirable by a lot of communities. We have it. We just need to try to make it work if we can. And not at anyone's cost or expense or liability, I understand Mr. Cypher's point, but...
Yeah. And I'm concerned too, with a hard surface with that slope right now, that's gonna have a lot of water rushing down that hill, and it's gonna be messed at the bottom even worse than it is right now.
Once the grading is done, if, um, something like a, a prairie grass or something of that nature that has really deep roots, that specifically absorbs a lot of moisture and prevents erosion, can stop a lot of the erosion, but that can't be done until all of the pushing, the dirt around is done. And it's, it's continually washing down the street, or down the hill. I mean, it buried the, the, what do you call those, plastic fences that are supposed to keep...
Silk fences.
Silk fences. It just pushed right over it and buried them, so, um...
Yeah.
It's that steep.
Yeah, it is. I really think that we should go back to city staff and have the engineer that we used go back and meet with the developer and make sure the grade is in fact what was approved on the, the final plans submitted.
Yes.
And then, to the extent that that is the same grade, which would surprise me, because it's overly steep, I think, then find out what Plan B is and have them work to try to bring something forward to the council.
Yeah. I guess that'd be...
No, I, I would agree with your comments, Mayor. Um, I, I had been out there, I'd walked it once. I've not walked it with the Cypher's though, at this point. Um, I, I think it is too steep, I think the elevation has, is different at this point. I also think that, um, you know, as a homeowner, um, I, I get a little emotional with, with this case, because I, I've also experienced a, a situation like this, where you've had an easement through your backyard, and you have people walking back through, and your house is there, and you can't enjoy the activity of that, that home. So I, so I appreciate what you, what you had to say there with respect to that. But still, I don't think we have enough information right in front of us right now to determine whether or not we take that easement out of there, or we leave it in, modify it to some degree, to whatever development plans would, would allow, based on the developer, you, and homeowner's association.
The utility easement is there, it's, that's a done deal, but the walking path easement is a separate issue. I, I didn't walk it. I went out with Catherine one day and looked at it, and I said, yeah, I'm not walking down there. So it, it's super steep.
It is.
Dr. Dave?
Well, there's a guy who lives on Hillrise and does walk that hill.
On the sidewalk.
I walked your path one day, came up, and it does seem steep. Um, I think that, um, as, as you all say, things might've changed since, um, since it was originally done. Um, I, I wonder, I mean, if, if I might, when, when did you purchase the lot and build the home? Was that, was that after, um, was that after the twenty sixteen, the twenty seventeen plan?
Yes, sir, it was. Uh, so, we purchased the lot, uh, and I remember the conversation, I was in the cul-de-sac speaking with Nate, you know, who's Rick's son, and we were talking about purchasing a lot, and, um, he said, you know, we're gonna put a walk path in for the, for the Highview, uh, Highview residents. And, uh, what started us in learning about the comprehensive plan and everything else was, and as you guys are well aware, I'm not gonna rehash it, but, uh, all the traffic that we were getting coming through, uh, not on the pathway, but, you know, through the yard, the driveway, and the, the back porch, um, and that is what started us, or my wife, uh, looking into it. And then we realized, well, this was, this wasn't just a, you know, the resonant pathway, that it was part of the comprehensive plan, and then now we're learning that it could possibly be part of the Green County plan, um, you know, which sort of expands on things a little bit, cause then when you start looking into it, it's, well, it's a path, it's a walkway easement, but it's listed in the comprehensive plan as a multi-use path, and it's not. It's a walkway easement, uh, because it's connected on, you know, with the sidewalk at the top, and then it'll connect, it'll go into the commercial property of Dots on the back end. Um, and, you know, I'm sure kids aren't gonna get off their bike and say, wait a minute, this is where the walk path starts, and walk their bike over the hill. Um, so anyway, that, we were aware it was gonna be for residents, Highview residents, um, but then it sort of got a lot bigger on us really pretty quick. Um, and then that's, you know, we learned that it's a sewer easement, and it's a water easement, and then Green County came out and dug the whole thing up, and we were like, you know, what's going on here? And so, you know, it's not necessarily the fact that, uh, you know, we're, we're trying to seclude ourselves, our own little piece of heaven, that's not it. We're simply trying to say, this isn't a good place for a path. This is, it's unsafe, and it's not, you know, at all Bellbrook, out of Highview Terrace, I'm sure we could come up with a more viable option for a path for the residents, you know, to connect to McGee Park, to connect, you know, to, to connect Highview instead of taking them over that hill right there. And then, then that's all. You know, when, when we realized, okay, wait a minute, you know, this could be some kid that's not connected to the, to the, to the neighborhood, you know, and it, it sort of changes the liability issue. You know, we weren't really worried about, you know, Todd and Lindsay or our next-door neighbors, if their kid gets hurt on the path, the chances of them suing us were a little bit less. Uh, you know, when it expanded quite a bit, then we got a little more concerned about, you know, the kid from five neighborhoods away who thinks, you know, everybody who lives there is rich, and let's sue the guys down at the end of the street. That's when we got a little bit more concerned over that. So, I know it's a long-winded answer, but that's sort of...
Appreciate it.
...the, the history of it.
Yeah.
I think in practical terms, the only people that are gonna really use the pathway are the residents. They're not gonna walk up from Little Sugar Creek. The only other ones might be come through from behind, but I, I still don't see people walking into Highview Terrace to then walk down into Bellbrook.
You know, it's an easy path, and I think you've seen people doing that, so...
Walking up from Little Sugar Creek at, at the McGee Park end?
Yeah. You said people walking both ways. They thought his driver was a sidewalk, one time.
But, okay, I, I just assumed that it would probably be mostly Highview Terrace people, neighborhood people walking into town, but...
I know we've got people here that wanna talk about it probably, and we do get open discussion next on the agenda, but at this time, if I get the council's approval, we can certainly let those who wanna speak on this issue speak now, and then we can go into our open discussion.
Okay.
Any complaints?
I don't have a problem with that.
We have somebody track time, I know who's got a cell phone that can track it, but everyone gets five, or three minutes, and say, say your, your name and address, and we ask that you do it to the lectern so the viewing audience and them can, can see you and hear you. Anybody counsel object, you doing that? Okay, so if anybody wants to speak with regards to this matter, we'll consider it the start of open discussion, and you get three minutes.
Seen some new faces up there from the last time I was here.
Yeah.
Mr. Schweller? Bill Darling, eighteen thirty-nine, Sugar Maple Place. And I'm here basically on behalf of this complaint about the steepness of it and the practicality of it. And actually, when I came here, I intended to ask more questions, and I had more questions. Some of them have been answered. But one of the big questions I have is, does the city actually have a, an easement on that piece of property? Does the city have a recorded easement on that piece of property we're talking about that we wanna put this, that you all want to put, or have been fast approved of? Is there a recorded easement on that, like there is an easement for utility? Is there an easement that you own on that?
I don't believe so. I think it's the HOA that has, not the city.
It's HOA.
It's not city-owned.
No, I, I understand that for sure, but, so you mean the easement is not city-owned?
Right.
Okay, so the easement is for utilities?
Right.
Right? So it seems like this is pirating an easement that's for something else. That's one question I had, and I asked Rick tonight, Rick Cummins, or, yeah, yeah.
Clemmons.
Clemmons, about it. And he said that he didn't think there was an easement directly, just what you have said here tonight. And what threw me, and the reason that caused me to ask that question, is I was kind of horrified, is this a, is this a sidewalk that we're going to put in, or is this a path we're going to put in? If we have to put something, if you choose to make us do this, to vote in that way, is this a sidewalk or a path? Or does it make any difference?
You know, I would think it's a path, to be honest with you, because I'm, I'd be concerned about how steep it is for the walk.
That's what it says on the plans, it's a walking path, not a sidewalk.
There were never specifications for material or thickness or anything submitted with the plan. It's just put in as a walking path. And like I said, it's a fifty-foot easement, but there was no specifications in terms of it's gonna be a ten-foot path, or it's gonna be a fifty-foot path. There were never any specifications regarding the actual path.
Well, that's confirmed when I talked to Rick tonight, but he thinks it's just crushed gravel. So much crushed gravel in there, and that might be what it is, might be what he thinks it is, it might be right or not. By the way, answer to your question, you said Highview Terrace, major changes, you thought it was in, uh, May. The pedestrian access is to be owned and maintained by the homeowners' association. So Elaine, you were correct. It's, we own it.
Yeah, that's, that's what I saw on the plan.
And that gives me a little bit of different take on one thing you said here. You, I don't deny that you have a lot of liability associated with it, it's clear and evident, and I, and I think that's true. But I'd like to add to that. It seems to me that this proposal is somewhat of a quasi-public-private partnership. And the point of that is that as a partnership, there should be advantages to both sides. Now, the city would like to see this opened up so that people could come from Highview Terrace. They could come from other areas, they could walk up and down, and this would be available to the city. Hence, it's actually called in some of your paperwork as a public access. Now-
Don't run out of time here, so you just kinda-
Yeah, I will, and I might actually come back again because I didn't get my questions all answered. I haven't even gotten to the statement. The statement is this, though, partially. If it's a public process and it's a combination, then the, the homeowners association incur a huge amount of expense too, because it has to be maintained, it has to be, it has to be clean. And if it's not, and where I got horrified was the ordinance that you passed, I think you passed it nineteen seventeen. And this is the sidewalks. Okay? Now, on the sidewalks, it says, it says applies, this policy that you passed applies to all install, to all sidewalks and paths installed by owners, developers, homeowners association, condominiums, respective successors and assigns. Now, this policy does not, the sidewalk policy does not apply to situations in which the sidewalks or paths have been installed by the city council unless otherwise indicated by-
We're running out of time right now, so I may have to ask you to adhere to our rules about the three minutes thing. I appreciate your comments. And if you have questions to ask, or to be responded to, please submit it to the city, and we'll deal with them. Thank you. Anyone else care to speak?
Tim Tuttle, seventeen ninety-one Sugar Maple Place. My, I wasn't planning on talking about this issue tonight, I was obviously here for another reason. But I guess my, the main thing I would like to say is that when we moved in, we were under the impression there would be some access to downtown. How you get there, Little Sugar Creek Road, which I know is a mess and has no room for a sidewalk, clearly. I just know when we bought in that neighborhood, that was part of the reason we bought there. It's in the city, you're close to downtown. There should be some way to get from one to the other without putting yourself in danger, walking through something that isn't safe to walk through. So I guess, from our perspective, I mean, I have children who would love to be able to get to Dairy Shed in the summertime, or if I need eggs, I'd love to send my oldest down there to get them, so I don't have to. That is kind of what we thought when we bought there, that was the reason we built there. And I can attest, even when we built, which was four and a half, five years ago, that that grade was not like that then. It has been changed in the last two and a half years, from probably what was approved originally.
The piece we're talking about right now?
Yes. Down there on the, because the cul-de-sac didn't even exist. I mean, at that time, the road to go up to the upper section was in a different location completely. And all of that changed, and the elevations back there all changed. I mean, again, there was no structures back there at all. So when they started building farther down the street, they changed all that grading. So I, I can attest to that at least, because it's been that, that has changed just in the time we've lived there. So I guess, but how you do it safely, how you do it, I, I tend to agree, though. I don't think the HOA should be liable or responsible if you want it to be something connecting the downtown to our neighborhood. I think, you know, why, why should the HOA take that responsibility? I, I tend to agree with that, I also agree with the safety issue. I wouldn't, I wouldn't want that running beside my house if I'm in any way liable for it. But I do think it would be mostly for Highview Terrace residents, I tend to agree. Maybe Sable Ridge might cross over and come down, but I, I think it's mostly gonna be Highview. I, I think, especially if at some point you connect McGee to downtown. I think the vineyards would use that access point, probably Sable, to be honest with you, too, because going up our big hill and then to go back down, it wouldn't be the ideal walking path. But again, I guess, the only thing I'd like to express is that I, I, I would love, I know my family would love to have a way to get to downtown. How you can work that, be it through an easement, be it through some other medium. Again, I, I wouldn't begin to say I have a solution for that. I haven't seen enough documentation. Like I said, I wasn't planning on speaking on this, but as a resident there, I, I feel I should at least express my views.
Okay, yeah.
But, thank you very much.
Thank you. If anybody else wants to speak on this topic or any other item, I mean, we can move the entire, uh, open discussion forward. They have councils speak at the end.
And I just wanted to point out that that fifty-foot easement was not intended to be a walk path. It's there for a landscape buffer, that's why it's fifty-foot. So realistically speaking, it's not an entire walk path where folks can go wherever they want. If you put the walk path on the other side of the landscape buffer, then we no longer have a landscape buffer, which I believe is part of the land, is part of the subdivision regulations. So I think we need to take that into consideration. The other thing that I wanted to point out is that although the two thousand sixteen, it was approved to be, it was directed to be owned and maintained by the HOA, it's not owned by the HOA. They didn't buy it, it's not in common space, it's our property. So if the HOA wants to buy it, own it, and maintain it, then that's a whole different ballgame. That's all I wanted to point out, thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Sandy Darling, eighteen thirty-nine Sugar Maple Place. I have been the designated, um, HOA collector of fees. I, I'm not, there is no board, there is no HOA association that has any board members. We have a developer, Rick Clemmons, he is in charge of everything. He, he says what gets done, what gets paid, what the HOA association, um, what the dues go for. So, you know, so basically, right now, all of the dues that we collect each year go to maintaining the entrance, maintaining the landscaping, maintaining the common areas, and also the new section. When it was, when it, when it was developed, we're gonna have to maintain that back section that is going to be connected to Inverness. Okay, that's what we have, that's what we're, that's all we're, that's all we have right now. So we don't, the HOA doesn't own anything, because we really don't have, you know, a, um, a true HOA association, period. So until he turns it over to us, we don't have a say. We're just, I'm paying the, the water bill, you know, you know, the utilities, the maintenance, and the monies that we collect now. When we first, I know Elaine was here, and I believe you were here, Mr. Sweller, and somebody, maybe, um, was here. You were here. When we very, when this very first came together, there were twelve homeowners up there. Now, we've added twenty-two, so we have thirty-four homeowners. And those twenty-two new homeowners have no idea about what this path was supposed to be. So we would go down the old path, you know, we would go down carrying our grandchildren's in our, in the strollers, because you couldn't get down. And the Hofackers, who I don't believe aren't here tonight, they allowed us to go down their, their driveway and have access to Dots. So what we wanted, and what we wanted to do with this new development, um, the new, I'm sorry, the new section of development is just have some easy access way to downtown, because we all loved it. And for us, it was supposed to be something more natural, you know, you know, an easier way to get down, mulch, something that was just not, you know, industrial. And so, speaking to Rick tonight, he said that it was, from what he understood, it was supposed to be aggregate. You know, some kind of stone, but he agreed that that would all wash out as well. So as the grade is now, we now can't walk. We used to walk, you know, our dog and go up, and walk up to the office every day, my husband and I. He would walk up to the office, come back, we can't do that now. So I think there's been a little bit of a misconception since, um, you know, this whole pathway, you know, got instituted. And so, um, some people have even said, the newer homeowner says, well, you know, I wanna be able to have my kids ride their skateboards down there. We wanna have the four-wheel drive vehicles go down that path. You know, and one lady even said that I am going to take my golf court, my golf cart down that. So that was not, I don't think it was our intention, I don't think it was your intention. We just wanted to keep the entirety of the space, because it's beautiful. And it goes, you know, if it goes like right down Little Sugar Creek, you know, that would be great. And then one other thing I wanna bring up is that I was, I had knee surgery, um, earlier, and I was in the hospital, and it was in the Dayton Daily News about the city council meeting, that they had approved, um, the new, um, comprehensive plan. Well, they were looking at the comprehensive plan. And in that, it said that the final phase was going to be a sidewalk all the way in that corridor from Franklin to the vineyards, um, as a walking sidewalk. So ended story, that's, that's all we need. That would be, that would give everybody access to this, this whole comprehensive green, is it the Green County Comprehensive Plan? So, yeah, that, and, yeah, and I also, this is, I, I wrote this, and then I'd like to submit it, so probably council members, members should see it, because we were kind of like on it from the beginning.
Okay, thanks, appreciate it. Is anyone else in the audience care to speak to this, or speak to any other matter before the council? Young man in the back row, please. That's fine, come on.
You have to come up, David.
I'm Louis Schatzberger, I live at forty-eighty-two Rich Todd Drive. I was on the planning board when this case came up. I believe going down to Dots Market was supposed to be a walking path. And I know there were several walking paths put in around this property in lieu of green space. So when we talk about the walking paths, we need to remember the green space that each development is supposed to have within it. And this was supposed to have some walking paths in it. I don't remember the great detail of them, but I remember that was one of the things that they needed to approve, was the walking paths.
That's what I remember as well, because I was on the planning board with you. Um, and I wanna say it was, we approved the plan, and in lieu of taxes, he was going to donate the green space. And the green space was supposed to be for walking, a walking path.
Yeah.
So, you know, I don't know how we ended up with the plan that we have now with a walking path that doesn't seem to work based on the elevation, but it was the developer's responsibility to put in the walking path in lieu of taxes.
Right. That's what they, but I don't remember ever discussing what the walking path was gonna be made of, because I think at that time, they didn't know exactly where it was gonna be, but they knew it was gonna be on the edge of the property somewhere.
I think it's significant to Mr. Tuttle's point to find out when the elevation changed. Because if we approved a walking path on a different elevation, then, you know, we need to get the elevation back to where it was, so the path can go in. I think that's key.
Yeah, correct. All right, thank you.
And if, if, if I'm a mayor, I mean, in line with what he's saying, obviously, some things have changed. But after Louie, some of my time on the board, I thought that when Highview Terrace went in, there was supposed to be a path. Okay? I mean, that, that was part of, part of the approval, there was supposed to be a path. So maybe it changed, but where's, where's the developer? I mean, you know, as many lots as we've gone back in there and changed for them. If there's supposed to be a path, that's what was originally approved. And I think that that well predated any plan, any comprehensive plan we had. You talk in twenty sixteen, twenty seventeen, we did the plan last year. And I guess the only other thing as far as, I mean, I, I appreciate your passion. But having served with the guys on planning board, I don't see much group think. I see, you know, three, four other guys with very independent opinions. Sometimes we agreed, sometimes we didn't. And I, I guess, I don't know anybody's hell-bent for leather to put that path in. But I would say if the developer came in originally and said there would be a path, and people expect it, and people know it, then sure ought to be a path somewhere, and have, have him be part of that.
Good, thanks. We got two people to speak, James, you're on the same topic, I'll give you three minutes, and then-
Two thousand seventeen, I sat there and ate my lunch while I was watching them dig out the retention pond, uh, because they were building our, our, our pad. And so they took a lot of that dirt, uh, in two thousand seventeen and moved it around up on the hill. And then we actually had to do it ourselves. When we bought Lot Fifty was a cliff, and then we had to grade that ourselves. Because it was literally probably a twenty, thirty-foot drop-off on the backside of that, after they had finished building our pad and taking the dirt from the retention pond. So, uh, and then to your point, and I don't wanna get them back and forth, but the group think was the entire group of people from the neighborhood, not the planning commission. So that was, you know, to, to your point, so.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor, one other, one other item. Can, can we find out fairly easily what the liability issue is on that? I guess I, I'm not, I need to know myself, who, who's the ownership? It sounds like it's the association. The path in front of Green Metal Ranch is the association that owns it. So who owns it, who's gonna own it, and what's the liability of the homeowners around it? That might help at least.
If I'm not mistaken, when a sidewalk goes across the front of your property, now the sidewalk and the pathways are different. But when a sidewalk is across your property, even though it's on an easement, it's a public sidewalk, but you're still liable if somebody falls, they can sue you for it not being in proper repair, or if they slip and fall on the ice. I believe that the homeowner insurance is, is the one that comes into play.
But the, but an association-
You can verify that with our attorney, but I'm pretty sure that's what I've always understood as, as a homeowner, that even though that's not really my sidewalk, because it's on my property, I'm liable for it.
Please sort of refer that question to council, and we'll find out what the answer is. Sure, we'll follow up on that. Does anybody else wanna come before the council speak with regards to the item of new business walking path, Highview Terrace?
I thought somebody would say this, I didn't wanna mention it. But there was questions about what was supposed to be put down. So nine May two thousand sixteen is when the council approved Chips and Dust. It went back and forth between should it be paved, should it not be paved? The final decision was Chips and Dust for a variety of reasons. One was the increased runoff, one was the flood plain issue. And then it's been mentioned again in other meetings. So March twelfth, I watched the video the other day, March twelfth of two thousand eighteen, the city manager specifically said it can't be paved due to the flood plain.
Okay, thank you. Dale Wilson. Welcome back.
Dale Wilson, forty-nine-eight Maxwell Drive. I do have some history about some of what's going on here. And when this, I've walked that path many times with the, with Mark Slaga. And this new easement in two thousand seventeen was not there. I mean, the path was, was the red line that you had indicated here. And our only concern back then was how to cross the creek to get people into McGee Park.
Yeah.
It was never intended to go up to Highview Terrace. Now, we did talk to Rick Clemmons several times, saying, how is this? And the impression was then to us that the service department was gonna maintain that path, not property on it. So our question to Rick Clemmons at that time was, where is, where's there gonna be access for the service department to get in there? I mean, to, to put this access here, that was never part of the conversation back then. Now, the city did make Rick Clemmons put water line in there. So that's why you have a water easement there. We put a water line in there to connect to the water system, so we had a loop in the system. So, but I don't know how the word walking got part of that easement, because it's really supposed to be the red line, that's what the original, you were exactly right what you said.
Absolutely, and it was part of the green space that was going to be deeded to the city once the development, he couldn't deed it until the development was totally done.
That is correct.
Which is, it's still-
Then it would become the city's responsibility to maintain it after that part. But that was not what you see in yellow here.
No, it was the red line.
Fifty-foot easement.
It was the red line.
Correct. And, and we always talked like it would be aggregate. Because we talked about that, because if we tried to maintain it, you tried to salt it, it would destroy that and things like that. But we knew it was gonna be aggregate. It'd be easier to maintain that than it would be mulch or something like that.
Yeah.
So, I mean, that's what I recall. I mean, I have been part of this process in a year and a half now, but it's very familiar. So just wanted to offer that information.
You're absolutely correct.
Thank you, Dale. Anybody else? Now, does anyone wanna talk about anything else in open discussion? We'll go to the audience first, and we'll finish up, and we'll conclude with council. So speak now, or hold your peace.
David Bucalo, one-two-six Lower Hillside Drive. I'm gonna talk about the Dart building. I'm gonna ask the council tonight to delay the Dart case. It's, it's before your BZA and Property Review Commission. Mr. Dart's not here, it's probably working. It's creating a hardship on the property owner. I believe there are questionable actions that have been taken by city staff. I do not say that lightly, I say that in utmost seriousness. And I think Mr. Dart's been treated in a very unprofessional manner by city staff. And I'm not gonna, I don't wanna go into the detail here, I don't wanna be inflammatory, but I do have detail, and I have good reason for making those statements. His zoning violations for twenty-seven, his fines for sixty-seven hundred dollars, and the proposed upgrades, according to Mr. Dart, would run over a hundred thousand dollars. That would sink most businesses in Belbrook. I don't know of any businesses, and I really don't know of any, other than maybe the funeral home that could assort such a, um, you know, a financial cost. And I don't understand why there are fines associated with zoning violations. You oughta look at repealing that. Some of the items on his list are petty, some aren't. And the additional time, since there's no damage to the community by waiting, would give Mr. Dart time to work things out in a more reasonable manner. Most business owners find dealing with government at any level, including city government, to be overwhelming. On one hand, the city says, we're communicating with Mr. Dart. And I've talked to Pamela about that, and I understand that. But on the other hand, Mr. Dart says, there is no communication. So obviously, there's a, there's a, there's no common ground there. I believe there needs to be a balance between the administrative and the legislative branches of this government within the confines of the city charter. And I think that's gotten a little out of whack. I fear that too much power has been placed in the hands of the administration, that they're not only setting the tone and the direction of the community, but also responsible for the day-to-day affairs of it. So I guess I'm asking, keep within your three minutes, that I'm asking that you look into- the performance of the administrative staff with regard to this particular issue, that you delay the Dart, pull it off the BZA agenda. As I said, there's going to be no damage done to the city as a result of giving it a delay. And Mr. Dart, one time, was promised, I was told, that delays could be arranged indefinitely. And then I was told that, no, delays cannot be arranged. And the other thing that's related...
Yeah, was he scheduled for the November 19th BZA meeting?
Yeah. The other thing that's related to this is, I could probably go on for two hours about the Old Village Revitalization.
But you only have three minutes, right?
Yeah, but I won't. But the Old Village is near and dear to my heart.
Is it, is to everybody?
What I don't understand is why the Old Village Review Board is being marginalized. I fear that they're going to be marginalized and shoved off to the side. I think they already have been. Where are they in this process? Where are they in any of the processes? So there's a big emphasis to bring in the business community, but no emphasis to bring in the people who actually live in the Old Village, pay taxes in the Old Village. Originally, it was the Old Village Review, citizens, and you brought in the business people, everyone together. But we're, we're, I'll wrap this up. But we're headed toward a system to where someone said earlier, you know, I think that gentleman did, you know, he made a comment about people from Beaver Creek. We have people from Centerville, we have people from Xenia, we have people from Beaver Creek, we have people from Sugar Creek. We need people from Belbrook. And you're not getting it on these committees. And I do feel the Old Village Review Board is being set up for a fall. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments on open discussion from any of the audience on any topic whatsoever? At this time, we'll conclude with comments from council and open discussion. Mr. Edwards?
I don't have anything more tonight, mayor, thank you.
Mr. Greenwood?
I just, I'd like to add, I appreciate everybody coming to this meeting. This is how democracy works. We discuss, we figure out what's the best way to go. We're trying to serve the people, make sure they get what they need and want, and try to make everybody happy, and something that's going to work. And these types of decisions, like was brought up, like where I live was surveyed in 1844, everything, nothing's changed, decisions made there may be there for several hundred years, so it's important that we discuss and we bring up ideas and make it right. I appreciate your back, gentlemen.
I echo Forrest, that's, to get input from people is what we're here for. And we have to sort it all out and make it work for everyone. And not everyone's going to be 100% happy, but you do the best you can and, and still stay within the legal limits of what we're allowed to do.
Thank you. Donna?
I just wanted to welcome Mr. Tuttle to the planning board. You obviously got your challenges ahead of you, based on tonight's discussion. The good news is, it's very challenging. The bad news is, it doesn't pay very well, so... But also, I appreciate everybody coming tonight also, and I, everybody's been very cordial and very open with their ideas, and I appreciate that. I also was going to say that this Friday is the last home game for the Belbrook football team.
Already?
We're fast.
Yeah. And I think our chances, unfortunately, of making the playoffs is very slim, so...
Yikes.
So that's it.
Dr. Van, Elisen?
I'm tickled to see people out here. It's much better in the empty room. And I think also, speaking of democracy, and remembering back to when I moved here 12 years ago, this was the first election I got to vote in, in person, after 26 years active duty. And I think a week from tomorrow, there is an election.
That's correct, number five. Thank you. Mr. McGill?
Interesting day today. I took a field trip. And the field trip had to do with emergency weather sirens, potentially for the city. I visited the city of Pikeston, Ohio, as well as Central State University, with a representative from American Signal Corporation. American Signal Corporation has been in business since 1942. They, when they first made air raid sirens for civil defense mechanisms here within the states, as well as overseas in, in Britain. And the representative I went with was very encouraging, and said that we potentially could put a system into our city here with minimal cost. But the neat thing about this is, it doesn't have to be directly tied to the emergency management system. With your phone now, there's an application that they use in Pikeston, that the police car can be driving along, and an emergency would come in, the officer can take his radio, key his radio, and put the application up to it, and a siren will go off, and we'll, and we'll make the notification for mass distribution to the populace. So they're, they're, they're known as omnidirectional signals. They operate in a one-and-a-half-mile radius for, for the existing siren. He felt that for our city, which we looked at today, could probably use two sirens and be very, be heard no matter where they were at in, in the city here. The other thing that was encouraging was, we have an old fireman's siren that apparently was used to alert volunteers to come down to the fire department, fires. He said for several hundred dollars, he was going to give me a direct quote on this, but we probably could take and identify that, put an encoder with that, to take on the, just a small area in the village here for, for information and sounding for that. So I'm very encouraged with that. He's going to give us a quote, and we'll see what we can do here, before we get, you know, into severe weather season again, back in, back in the spring. So just to let everybody know that that was done.
Thank you very much, appreciate it. Glad to have you.
Yeah, it's fine.
I want to thank everybody for attending tonight. It was a good meeting. To the extent you have questions that weren't answered, I would advise you to submit it to the city council, submit to city management staff on the email. We will look into it, and we get the answers for you. I think we got the right answer on Highview. I know it's not a yes or no that people would have wanted tonight, but I think it's the best way to go forward. I do think the terrain is very steep, and I think it's problematic from that standpoint, so I think we're going in the right direction. Tuesday, November the 5th is an election. It's a very important election for the city of Belbrook. I would encourage everyone to get out and vote. Does any member of council have any other business to come before this meeting?
No.
Hearing none, I declare the meeting adjourned.